You're live.
Thank you, Nora. Welcome, everybody. Announcement is made. The adequate notice of this meeting has been given. And that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six et sec of the New Jersey Public, Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting can be accessed via the link provided on the town's website. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Unmute.
If I unmute myself. Mr. Didich. Councilman D. Piero. Councilman D. Piero. Mr. Dinsmore. He may be late. Mr. Fergieri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
We just saw her.
For the record, Ms. Hernandez.
Oh, sorry.
I'm. Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Von Aken.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Ms. Favate, our board engineer, Mr. Congiano, and our board attorney, Mr. Wenzel.
All right. I also see that Councilman D. Piero is here. I just wanted to be able to confirm for the record. Mr. D. Piero. All right, I can't hear the councilman.
Okay, and if we can also have Mr. Didich moved up.
The councilman is unmuted. I'm not sure if his mic is working.
Okay.
Can we please have Mr. Didich moved up?
Okay, yes, and I see Mr. Didich.
Okay, and then I just would like to. This is, this announcement is for the members of the public who have joined this meeting on their computer and selected to use the phone option for audio. If you dialed into the system using your phone, you will not be able to raise your hand to comment. To have the ability to raise your hand and comment, you must do the following. Leave the meeting. Rejoin the meeting. When selecting audio, choose the option to have the system call you and input the phone number you wish to be called on. This option will pair your computer with your phone and will allow you to raise your hand if you wish to comment during the public session. That's it.
Okay, with that, please, everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, on our agenda for tonight, we have two resolutions. We also have a matter of the Highlands for master plan. To make sure it's aligned with our master plan, and we also have two applications. Starting first with the resolutions.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I believe we are approving Resolution twenty-five twenty-four only this evening.
Thank you for that correction. You're absolutely right. I was thinking to myself, where was the other resolution? Okay, so we have resolution on application number twenty colon five-two-four, the Lidl U.S. Operations on Befferick Road. Have all the members of the board been able to review the resolution? And are there any questions or concerns at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mendel.
I had raised a question about the application with our attorney, and I'm wondering if he has corrected that.
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mendel. There was a slip in a typo I should have had in there, the fifteen-foot standard for the height, which is now in the revised resolution that Nora has, and it's all confirmed. So I appreciate that, Mr. Mendel, for your very close reading of the resolution. Your eyes are very good.
You'll get used to that. Mr. Mendel has eyes like a hawk.
As long as I don't write it, I can proof it.
I certainly understand that. Okay. Were there any other comments or concerns about the resolution? If not, I will accept a. Oh, gosh, my mind's in a different place. I'll accept the motion to accept the resolution. As noted by Mr. Mendel.
I'll make the motion to accept the application twenty colon five-twenty-four, Lidl U.S. Operations.
Do we have a second?
Have a second.
Second, Hernandez.
All right, I heard Hernandez. Nora, would you please call the roll?
D. Piero.
All right, we're still having trouble hearing Michael.
Okay, Fergieri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Hernandez. Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes.
Is Mr. D. Piero. Can we get a raised hand on that?
Can I interrupt a minute? This is Earl IT. I can probably help Mr. D. Piero to be able to get audio working. Councilman, if you go to the bottom of your screen and you'll see the three dots, you click on that, you can switch your audio, and you can select to have the system dial your phone, and you can use that for your audio.
Earl, I, that's a very good suggestion, but I think the councilman logged off and is attempting to log back on. So he's pulling a all-control delete on us.
He jumped out when I wasn't looking.
All right, we'll wait for the councilman because I do want him to be available for testimony. Nora, I think we also need his vote on this resolution also. Right?
Um, he, he can vote. I don't believe we.
Do we need him?
I don't believe we need it.
All right, then we'll continue with other business. I'm happy to have him provide his, his vote later. Actually, no, the next item of business is the, is the application. Unless we want to take on the Highlands provision at this moment. Mr. Wenzel, any objections?
No, Mr. Chairman, you can't.
Okay. All right, with that, all the members of the, of the board should have received. I'm bringing it up right now. The ordinances for the Highlands Regional Master Plan consistency. Were there any comments or concerns regarding the ordinance as prepared by Ms. Favate?
Well, actually, it's a, Mr. Chairman, it's a memo on the ordinances. I don't know if the board has had a chance to see the ordinances, but I can take, take you all through it. I think most of you are probably familiar with kind of the Highlands process, but I'll give a recap and summarize the ordinances, which are pretty much procedural, but are before the council for first reading, and so you have to do a consistency determination. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to go through that briefly?
Yes, that'll be fine.
Great, and I'm sorry for the late, the lateness in coming of the memos. I like to get them out earlier, but it's a Monday, and I just, I got it out at seven, so I will take you all through it. So I think most of you who've been on the board for a little while are somewhat familiar with the Highlands Council and the process and the fact that it was, you know, it was a major recommendation of the twenty-twenty master plan for Parsippany to opt into the Highlands Regional Master Plan Conformance. For those of you who are less familiar with that, basically, the Highlands Region is, is a regional planning body, covers, you know, much of the northeastern part of the, northwestern part of the state, excuse me. And a portion of part, actually, all of Parsippany is in the planning area for the Parsip, for the Highlands Region. The planning area makes it optional, whether you conform your master plan and ordinances to the regional master plan. Some municipalities are in the preservation area. Those are, you know, the areas that are very hilly and a little bit farther west. So they do not have the option. They have to conform to the regional master plan. Parsippany does have the option, but it's, it's long been a planned policy of the township to opt into the regional master plan, and that process had started about ten years ago and kind of stalled. But it was really restarted in earnest in twenty nineteen. So last summer, the township submitted a petition for regional master plan conformance, basically just asking the Highlands Council to accept that the township's master plan is, you know, largely consistent with the regional master plan, and that the township is committed to bringing its land use ordinances in line and inconsistency with the regional master plan. So that petition was submitted last summer. There was a public hearing in September of the Highlands Council. We made some revisions based on comments, and then they had a second public hearing in December, early December, and it was approved. Basically, then they had to go to the governor's desk, and he had a certain amount of time when he could veto it, and he did not, thankfully. So as of basically the end of the year, the, the consistency, I'm sorry, the conformance petition became accepted, and we sort of officially opted in. So where that leaves us now is, the good news is that the township immediately became eligible to get grants from Highlands Council to do implementation measures, a whole host of them, and I know Judy Hernandez has been working on a little bit on those with the Green Team. But in terms of the review of land use applications, which I think some of you are familiar with, that, that when you opt into the Highlands Regional Master Plan, you know, you add sort of a layer of review for some applications where they have to be determined consistent with the regional master plan. That does not happen until the township adopts what's called the referral ordinance. And the referral ordinance, it's basically a stopgap measure until a such time as the township can update its master plan and, more importantly, update the land use ordinances to bring them in line with the regional master plan. Now, we were, we were told by Highlands Council as part of the approval process that they determined that the master plan was, you know, pretty much consistent with the regional master plan. I mean, it was just done. We all knew this was kind of coming, and the processes were, were sort of aligned, so there's probably very little that needs to be done to the master plan. They would like us to, to adopt a Highlands element of the, the master plan, but the ordinances, so the ordinances governing things like wetlands, streams, steep slopes, those need to be reviewed and probably revised to make sure that they're consistent. All that takes time. So in the interim, the township is adopting the referral ordinance, which basically provides the procedure for referring applications up to the Highlands Council. So basically, it requires anything that is not exempt, any planning board or Board of Adjustment application that is not considered exempt, and I'll go through some of those exemptions, that that has to be reviewed by the Highlands Council before it can be determined complete at the local level. So it has to go up to Highlands. They, they make a determination. If it's, if it looks good, and they think it's consistent, they make that determination, send it back to the township. It's determined complete, and then it proceeds as it normally does through, you know, through the approvals process. If they determine that it's not consistent, then the applicant, applicant has to make some revisions. That's all done between the applicant and Highlands. Once that's been resolved, they send it back, and again, it proceeds through, you know, once it's determined complete, it proceeds through the normal process. Any kind of condition that Highlands imposed on the application does need to be reflected in Parsippany's approval resolution. So it's really just making sure that everybody is, is on the same page. Now, once the township has updated its master plan and, and ordinances so that they are consistent with the regional master plan, the referral ordinance will no longer be needed because we will be making the Highlands review at, at the local level. There'll be some training involved with that in terms of myself and Jennifer Beely. But it, the intent is always that it comes to the local level and it's done locally. You just have to have the stopgap measure. So quickly, I'm going to go through kind of what, what applications are applied to this, this referral ordinances and what don't, and which ones are exempt. So there's a few applications that, that automatically are applicable to the referral ordinance. One is residential development with three or more units per lot. And then there's a host of non-residential development types that, that tend to have more of an impact or potential impact on resources. So those are anything that results in disturbance of one acre or more of land. Any non-residential development that produces a cumulative impervious surface area of more than a quarter acre. Or certain types of developments that either, either introduce or expand, things like landfills, storage of hazardous waste, disposal of hazardous waste, transfer stations, industrial treatment facilities, and, and any major or minor contaminant source. If it's within a certain number of feet of the wellhead areas. So those kind of automatically get referred. Then there's a host of, of development types or application types that are excluded that are never referred to for Highlands, and that includes reconstruction within the same footprint of any building or structure that is destroyed by fire, storm, natural disaster, et cetera. Anything, any alteration that's being done to bring a building or structure into compliance with the ADA or make it accessible to the disabled. Or a couple types of development that deal with agriculture and, and houses on septic, that's not really applicable to Parsippany. So those types of applications are excluded and not, not applicable to referral ordinance. But then there's a list of applications that we will be seeing that, that are types of development that we do see in Parsippany. And these are exempt, and so this is important to, to understand because I think a lot of members of the public and perhaps even some on the board have a sense that everything is reviewed by Highlands, but in, in reality, a lot of what we typically see at our boards is going to be exempt. So anything really dealing with single-family homes, single-family home construction on a lot that was owned by the same person at, at the time of the Highlands Act adoption, any single-family home construction that doesn't involve more than an acre of disturbance or a quarter acre of impervious coverage. And then any, any addition or improvement to a single-family home, such as an addition, garage, shed, patio, swimming pool, that type of thing. And then non-residential development or, or even multifamily type development, we'll be seeing a lot of this, as long as it's within a hundred and twenty-five percent of the footprint of a legally existing impervious surface, that is considered exempt, as long as it doesn't increase the impervious coverage by a quarter acre or more. So a lot of, you know, Parsippany has previously developed things like shopping centers that become redeveloped into something else. As long as the new development is within a hundred and twenty-five percent of that existing impervious footprint, it's going to be exempt. So that's something we'll probably be seeing a bit of. And then a couple others, improvements to houses of worship, schools, or hospitals are exempt. Anything that occurs under a woodland management plan, which I don't think we probably have here in Parsippany. And then construction and extension of trails with non-impervious surfaces are considered exempt. So basically, you know, there's a list of things that, that are not going to, not going to be applicable here, and that determination has to be made pretty much upfront in terms of whether it's exempt or not. And that determination will be made by Parsip. It pretty much immediately, and that, and that's the other ordinance that you have before you. It's the exemption ordinance. And it basically lays out, establishes the process for Parsippany to issue those exemption determinations. Those will be made by, by myself or Jen, Beely. We'll be getting some training from Highlands Council on making those exemption determinations. But basically, the process that will happen is, once an application is submitted, once it's determined complete, then you will have to make a determination as to whether it's, it's exempt or not. And the ordinance also establishes, you know, fees, the timelines, the submission requirements, and a process for appeal. So it's pretty much procedural. And the long term, long term is that, again, once, once the township has updated the master plan and the ordinances as they need to for consistency with the Highlands master plan, the referral ordinance will go away. It'll be eliminated. It won't be needed anymore. But the exemption ordinance will stay because that is the process for exemption. Whoever's doing the Highlands review, whether it's up at the Highlands Council or whether it's done locally, the exemption process is the same. So that's, those are the two ordinances that are before you. They were heard by the council for first reading last week. And I believe the schedule for now is that they will be on for second reading on April sixth. So what you have for you tonight that you have to do is make your master plan consistency determination, as you do with any ordinance, land use-related ordinance. So what we've done in the memo which came to you tonight is we pulled out the, the policies and goals of the master plan that we feel are most relevant to these ordinance. I mean, I will say that, again, it was a recommendation of the master plan to come into conformance with Highlands. So this is all consistent with that recommendation of the master plan. But we did pull out a few goals, and one of them is goal seven, which really deals with protection of environmental resources like wetlands, buffers, streams, steep slopes, et cetera. And, and we find that this is consistent with that goal because it's, it's really, it's facilitating an additional review of certain applications for consistency with the regional master plan, which, which, you know, is going to be looking more deeply at potential impacts to environmental resources. Then another goal that we think is applicable is goal eight, which deals with sustainable development, green infrastructure, you know, best practices for stormwater management. And similarly to the other, other goal, you know, because of the, you know, the layer of review that Highlands is going to be doing, it's, it's really going to be enhancing the protection of those environmental resources like streams and wetlands, which play a role in, in, you know, climate change mitigation and long-term sustainability. And then the last goal, which may be the most relevant, actually, is goal ten, which deals with utilities, the water and sewer utilities, and making sure that, that they're adequately maintained, but there's sufficient capacity to, to serve the population, and in particular, there's a focus on conserving the water supply. So if you're familiar with the Highlands Regional Master Plan, you know that it's, it's really at heart about water. It's about water resources. And so protecting those water resources in the region, including groundwater, to serve the drinking water, is a really important focus of the Highlands Regional Master Plan. So a lot of what they'll be looking at in their reviews is the impact on water resources. And in fact, some of the funding that, that is available to the township, which is already being looked at, is things like water conservation and making sure that we're, we're using the water responsibly. So that's a, a lot of talking. It's a long way of saying that we, we are finding and recommending that these two ordinances, the referral ordinance and the exemption ordinance, are both consistent with the twenty-twenty master plan, and we would recommend that the planning board make that determination and send that to council for, for their review. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Go ahead, Dominic.
Susan, does, does the Highlands Council meet frequently, or would they be a roadblock to anything that we send to them?
They, they do meet about once a month, but the, the approvals do not require, as I understand it, that they're done by staff. They're, they don't require a vote of the council. The Highlands Council votes on things like the, the petitions for plan conformance, which we, is what we submitted last year. And they also vote on some of the funding, but in terms of the, the land use reviews, my understanding is those are done by staff, and they're done, you know, all the time.
Thank you.
Basis.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mendel.
Yeah, Susan, how does this, will this affect the various COA applications that we're going to see over the next year or so?
It's a good question. Anything that is already in, complete, is not going to be, not going to be subject to Highlands review. So assuming that they can be in by, you know, April sixth, or whenever the ordinances are adopted, and they can be determined complete, they'll be grandfathered and, and not, not subject. So a lot of them have already come in, you know, Steve, and even the ones that haven't been heard yet or still being heard will not be affected. Anything that's submitted after, you know, it may be exempt, and I think some of them probably will be exempt if they're, you know, redevelopment of existing, like shopping centers or other types of development, they may fall under that a hundred and twenty-five percent threshold. But if they come in after, after the ordinances are in place, they will have to at least either be determined exempt or be subject to review.
But does the Highlands Council have the same constraints that we have as far as, you know, the court saying, basically, do it?
I mean, the short answer is no, but at the same time, the Highlands Council is very, they're very aware of, you know, the importance of us meeting our affordable housing obligation. And we've been talking a lot with Highland staff throughout the whole process, you know, they're aware of the different COA applications. We've talked about, you know, is this one going to be subject? You know, what do you think about this? And, and again, most of them are going to be already in before this comes into play.
Okay, thank you.
I anticipate that they would be, it's not in their interest to be throwing up roadblocks to COA applications. And, and I think it's important to know also that Highlands review is not, it's not a way to kill development. In, in all of my discussions with staff at Highlands Council, I, I think they said only once has a development ever been stopped by Highlands, Highlands review, and that's in the whole, whole state. Basically, what they're looking at is, is what is the impact on the resources that are at play? And so what, what is the resource? Is it a wetland on the site? Is it a stream? Is the wetland, you know, pristine, or is it degraded because it's, it's a previously developed site? So they're going to take all that into, into effect. And they're going to, you know, they're going to make some recommendations, most likely, on how to, you know, either protect the resource and maybe even improve it. You know, it's, it's going to be mostly comments is what I think we're going to be seeing. Any questions? Chairman, I think you're on mute.
I've got one.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you. Sorry, I was speaking while I was muted. I was trying to be more official. It slipped right past me. What, the goals, which I, I, I think are, are lovable that, that you highlighted, Susan. One of the things that I run into, and I, I, you know, I, I've been doing this for, for a couple of years now, is that, will it be incumbent on applicants, or will it be the planner's review? How do we know what the criteria is, or does that then become incumbent on us? You know, when we get a summary of an application, whether it's, you know how now there is a reference to impervious surface and when we start bringing in some of these other criteria? What is our, I'm trying to think of the right term, but what do we check against?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question, Bruce. So it's, basically, it's going to become a new checklist requirement, and there'll be materials created that are, will be provided as part of the application. So it's going to be, the burden is on the developer, the applicant, developer, or the applicant to show how they, they're exempt. And if they can't show that they're exempt, or even if they say they're exempt, and then, and then, you know, we'll be looking, the professionals will be looking now over that and confirming that, similar to how we look at the checklist now. That, you know, the burden is, and not, not you as a board. So you, you don't, you need to be, you not need to be making those determinations. By the time it gets to you, they'll either have already been determined exempt, or it'll be coming from Highlands Council with comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there are no other comments, I'll accept a motion on the Highlands memo at this time.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Napolitano made a motion. Do we, is your motion to accept?
Accept, motion to accept, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second for Jerry.
All right, Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Didich.
Yes.
And Mr. Dinsmore.
I came in just as Susan was starting to talk. I don't know whether it's appropriate.
Chairman.
We, we can excuse Mr. Dinsmore from, from this vote.
Mr. Fergieri.
I vote yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Ms. Hernandez. Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you all.
All right, and just for the record, we do have Mr. Dinsmore joining us. It appears as if Councilman D. Piero has not been able to rejoin us. So it's on the record now. That stated, we have resolutions before, I'm sorry, our agenda items before us. First application is number twenty colon five-two-six. GJ Real Properties LLC, nine fifty Edwards Road, block seven sixty-six, lot fourteen preliminary and final, and and final major site plan with major soil movement. Is the applicant here to present?
Yes, this is Attorney Rosemary Stone Doherty on behalf of the applicant, and I also have my applicant's engineer and the principal of my applicant, Mr. Ficino, Mr. Carabella, they're sharing the screen.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good to have you with us all. All right. Ms. Favate, would you like to walk us through the waivers for this application?
Nora, Mr. Chairman, we, we initially reviewed this back in October, I believe, and had some comments on completeness, and then.
And then they submitted additional materials. So most of our prior comments on completeness were addressed. We we did request testimony on whether there are protective covenants or deed restrictions. I'm hopeful that they'll provide some additional site photos and testimony. We we asked for testimony on the use of the buildings, the functioning of the operations. They did request a waiver on the traffic study and we requested some testimony to support that request. We we recommended, I'm sorry, they did, they did end up providing an environmental assessment before that, before that was done. And then because this is a combined preliminary and final, they did ask for for the conditions of the preliminary approval, which we recommended.
All right, regarding the traffic portion of this, are you satisfied with the with the comments you've received about whether that was appropriate for a waiver?
I I think it is appropriate. I think that they do need to provide the testimony on the traffic and they will.
Okay, all right. I'll accept the motion on the waivers.
Excuse me, can I be heard now? Anybody hear me?
Welcome back, Mr. Di Piero.
Just so you know, Windows did an upgrade on Windows ten for me a couple of days ago. And now my webcam sound doesn't work.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. I'm sure we've all dealt with that at one point in time or another, but we can see you and we can hear you. So welcome back, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, motion by Mr. Mandel to accept the waivers. Do we have a second?
Second, Mealy.
All right, Mr. Mealy is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, waivers are accepted. And would the applicant please continue?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again Attorney Rosemary Stone Doherty on behalf of the applicant, which is GJ Real Properties LLC. This is in regards to the property located at nine fifty Edwards Road. It's approximately two point one three acres and we're in the LIW dash two zone. Here with me tonight, again, I have Mr. Vincent Ficino, which is the applicant's engineer. And I have a principal of the applicant, Mr. Caravella, here with me tonight. At this point in time, I'd like to call Mr. Ficino to go through the existing conditions, the engineering and really get into the meats and bones of this application. If we could have him sworn in, please.
You know, I see down there. Do you swear or tell the truth for this pointing board tonight in this virtual format?
I do.
Okay, very good. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure, Vincent Ficino, F is in Frank, A, C, C, H, I, N is in Nancy, O. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Okay, perfect. My address is twenty five Dixon Place, East Ternover, New Jersey, zero seven nine three six.
Mr. Ficino, I know you've testified in front of this board with me before in the past, but can you give the board just a little bit by way of summary background of your education, your experience, and hopefully that you're still licensed as of this evening?
Yes, I, Chairman, Board Members, I've received my Bachelor of Engineering at Stevens Institute of Technology in nineteen ninety eight. I've been a licensed engineer in New Jersey for since two thousand and two. My work consists of site planning, subdivisions, consulting and site inspection. I'm also a member of the New Jersey Society of Municipal Engineers. And as Rosemary stated, I have I have been sworn in as an expert in your town and township of Parsippany and other municipalities in New Jersey.
Go ahead. Rosemary?
I was just going to say, yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask if he would be accepted as for this evening?
Do any of the board members have an objection to Mr. Ficino? As an engineering witness? All right, hearing done, Mr. Ficino is accepted as a witness and engineer.
Thank you so much. So, Mr. Ficino, can you kind of walk us through what the site consists of today?
Sure, can I share my screen or is that, how do you guys work it on your end?
Yes, we can get you that permission.
Okay. I just, I want to put it.
Okay, just give me one second and I'm going to give you the ability.
No problem, thank you.
And Mr. Ficino, why he's doing that, you're going to share the plans that have already been submitted to the board, correct?
Yes. You're now the presenter, okay, shoot, hold on one second. Share. Okay. Can everyone see the site plan?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just move this over here, okay. So so basically in front of us, we have the preliminary final plans that were prepared by me last dated January tenth, two thousand twenty one. It should be the same plans that the board members have received. So we'll do that. We'll start as exhibit A or exhibit one. Okay, so the site. Should I continue? Everyone okay?
Yes, please.
So the site is known as nine fifty Edwards Road, block seven sixty six, lot fourteen. And I'm just going to zoom in on the aerial here. Okay, so, sorry. Give it a second. So this is the site here. It fronts on Edwards Road. Adjacent to, in the rear of the site, we have Route two eighty westbound on ramp. Just to the south of the site, we have a newly constructed warehouse slash office with outdoor storage and parking, similar to what we're going to present tonight. As you go farther east, you have the Wawa fueling station and convenience store at the corner of Edwards Road and New Road. And directly across from our property, we have another large contractor's yard, that's storage facility. It's also located as per your zoning ordinance in the LI two. LIW two, which is the light industrial warehouse district. Okay, so just a quick. I'm just going to get on to the existing conditions. So the site is two point one three acres. Just adjacent to the property, we have a twenty foot right away easement, which is which has a sixty inch transmission sewage line, which is controlled by the Sanita, I'm sorry, Parsippany Sewage Authority. To historically, the site has always been some kind of contractor's yard. If you look at all the aerials, there's, it's it's been disturbed for decades. Presently on site, and what's left is an existing garage, some outdoor storage of material. There's a falling down garage, some 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 chain link fencing, some overgrown brush and and shrubs. For the proposed we, for the proposed conditions, we'll be clearing the site, we'll be removing the existing structures. We are removing the sixty two and sixty two trees on site. And there's two reasons we're doing that. One is that most of them and some of them are diseased or dead. There's very, there's a lot of invasive species there. Secondly, the site has to be filled in to accommodate our stormwater management facilities. And also for ingress and egress to the property. Because right now it slopes downward away from from Edwards Road. So for us to make this project work, we would have to level it and fill it in. And obviously you can't fill in with trees there, so it would be an impact to the trees there. So we have done, oh, sorry. We have done a NJDP wetlands presence absence. And we have gotten the approval from the DP that no wetlands does exist on site. Also, we've drew the DP mapping that I used, we have no flood plains on site as well. The flood plain area is limited to just to the north side of the property, so it does not does not affect this entire property. So we are not in any flood plain or flood hazard area. So I'll get into the proposed conditions. With proposed conditions, we're, we are proposing a nine thousand square foot building, footprint. The building will have sixty three hundred square feet of warehouse in the rear of the building. And there'll be a office space in front of about twenty seven hundred square feet. And due to the height, this will be double height, so it'll be a high ceiling in the warehouse. And on on the office side, there'll be two floors of office, so it's going to be twenty seven hundred square feet on top of twenty seven hundred square feet. So the total usage of the building will be eleven thousand seven hundred square feet. But the building footprint is only nine thousand, just so to clear that, I don't know if some some people got confused with the area. So the the building's footprint is nine thousand square feet, but the overall occupant area will be eleven thousand seven hundred. The building will also have overhead garage doors in the rear for access for their vehicles to come in and out and be serviced and some storage in the buildings. So in the in the front of the building, we'll have, we'll accommodate all the parking required for the building. For all the the workers and employees that we, that will be occupying the building. They will not not need any parking for them in the rear of the building. We've also added handicap spaces for, you know, for the for the for accessibility to the building at the storefronts. Also, the front parking facility here will not have any construction vehicles parking on it. This will just be solely for employees' cars and either SUVs or trucks, whatever they have coming. But as for the outdoor, as for the rear of the building, we will be providing will be, we'll have all the outdoor storage. The outdoor storage will include all types of 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 trucks, dump trucks, tractor trailers, excavators for machines, any kind of construction equipment, demolition equipment. So pretty much anything that Caravella would have to run his his business and and use for outdoor storage in the rear of the building. And and also, just to clear up, we will be having all the tuminous pavement in front here, all where the regular parking cars are. But in the rear, we're asking to do millings and gravel parking lot. And this is, and we'll have a little concrete apron here for the garage. But the rest of it, we we're asking to have gravel and as and millings because of the the machinery and the weight of these, these will just destroy any kind of pavement. So it'll be much more repair work if we're trying to repair asphalt and instead of gravel and milling. So we're gonna, we're we're asking that we use millings to fill this whole area in. We are also proposing a six foot high chain link fence around the entire rear of the building to screen all this outdoor storage, which is required per your ordinance. And we also have provided dumpsters for the trash for the building. With regards to the bulk requirements, we are complying with all bulk requirements for this zone. We are also overparked by four parking spaces. And this is for a regular office and warehouse. A tenant, my tenant has nowhere close to, is is not nowhere close to needing thirty spaces. But he has twenty five employees that are not here all the time. And so so we're overparked, but we're we're going to be, we can comply with all their orders, all those bulk requirements there. Regarding grading. Just going to go to the next page. So regarding to grading, we set our first floor at one eighty three. So that pretty much set our our site with the driveway entrances. So what happened is we would have to fill the site in. There will be a retaining wall along the north side of the site. And it would wrap around to the west side of the site and just end with the little L here. The wall is is approximately one to four feet, depending on where you are on the site. So it's not a large wall, it's just a grading wall. And and the reason for this filling was to get our stormwater management to work. The site needed to be raised to get the underground detention basin to work as well as the water quality basin. So basically, the site, all the drainage on the site is collected by a few inlets. And it all drains to a detention basin here, which is a water quality basin. It further goes into a detention, underground detention basin, which will provide all our requirements for our stormwater. And then it discharges, sorry, it discharges to the rear as it does today. So we'll comply with all state and local requirements for water quality detention and recharge. So we have all that taken care of. The building will be serviced with underground. Sorry, let me just zoom in a little bit. All the utilities will be underground as far as telephone, gas, water. We will have sanitary sewer connection to the building via an existing, there is an existing connection to the site today with an existing cleanout, we will be tying into that cleanout. I know there's, I had to clarify some things with the Sewage Authority, but there is an existing cleanout here that we're tying to. It's about nine feet deep, which will be adequate enough for this, for this building to to utilize. And we won't have to go into the road for that. So I just, grading. Okay, so so with that said, well I want to discuss a little bit about our off-site grading. As I mentioned before, the site has this twenty foot easement that's occupied by that sixty inch transmission sewage line, which is controlled by the Parsippany Sewage Authority. So we we analyze the site and for us to make our site work, we would have had to put a wall along this other edge of the site, which is the north side of the site. And to to avoid having a wall, so and and then the adjacent, adjacent owner also has a wall on this side of the site. So 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 that we don't have this little twenty foot valley that no one is going to be able to maintain or have access to. But we have sat down with the Sewage Authority and they gave us permission to fill this area in. So we can avoid having a wall on both sides. So there'll just be a wall on the adjacent side where the existing property owner is. So we'll be filling this area in. We have permission from them to do that. We'll also be encroaching just a little bit on the other neighbor where they have, right now they have some mulch and some couple evergreen trees. So we'll be blending into their site. So you won't have any walls or anything on this side of the property, which it'll look, it'll look nice when it goes from one side of the site to the other. So that that's the reasoning for this off-site grading that we're doing, so.
And Mr. Ficino?
Yes.
As part of those discussions with the adjacent neighbor and filling in the site. You also, the applicant also agreed to maintain cutting of any grass and keeping that area clean as if it was part of their own maintenance on their own property, correct?
Correct, yes. So and I'll just, I'll just shoot to the next page. So that area would be all lawn area. Co- correct, yes, so and and I'll just, I'll just shoot to the next page, so that area would be all lawn area. Um, so yes, it it would be easily to ma- maintain by by the the applicant, not a problem. So it'll be all lawn area there, it'll be easier to maintain, right now it's all overgrown. Uh, again, vines and and shrubs and. So no one really takes care of it today, so it'll it'll definitely need to be mowed at, you know, from time to time, correct? So um. Also, just so getting back to the grading, um, we are asking for a major soil movement permit. Uh, the site will require us to import approximately nine thousand five hundred and seventy cubic yards. Of soil to sub- to get to subgrade. Um, uh, this is uh. You know, the 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 truck access. Um, from uh i- i- is is permitted for trucks to go on Edwards Road and New Road. And uh easy access to Route forty-six and two eighty, so the truck access to the site is very easy for this operation to happen. So we don't see any any reason why the soil movement um operations will have any effect. Um, we uh don't know the actual. Um, timing on the, I'm bringing the soil in, we're hoping that we can get the source all at once. And 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 come in at, uh, you know, whatever, a thousand, if we can get a thousand yards a day, uh, put in, that would be great. If not, it'll probably be at a smaller amount, uh depending on where the source is coming from, if we can get it all at once. So um, we don't know the exact amount, but I I think realistically, a thousand yards a day is 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 possible if you really. Have a good, good run of 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 material. Um, so uh we just need to get that on the on the record that we're asking for that soil movement permit.
Um, and Mr. Ficino, you had an opportunity to review Justin Liza, the mu- municipal engineer's uh. Memo in regards to the major soil moving permit dated January twenty-six, correct?
Yes.
And we can comply with his memo, um, which also indicates that obviously the township council's approval is also required.
Correct, yep, yep, no problem, we'll take care of all the. Application, application fees and downs. Okay. So um, as far as the landscaping, uh, we will be providing five shade trees along Edwards Road. Uh, we'll be, oh, sorry, we'll be adding shrubs and evergreens along all the parking areas in the front facing Edwards Road, so you won't see. Uh, car frontages and stuff, but we will also be adding evergreen trees. About twenty-six evergreen trees spaced out properly, so they'll have a full growth pattern. So along the the, uh, what's that, the west or the east side of the building. Um, obviously, to the rear, this is all gonna be outdoor storage, so we're not adding any landscaping in the back. But it will be lawn area, um, and it will be maintained regularly. Um, and also to the right, this is where the underground detention basin is, that would be lawn on top, because you don't want anything growing on that. Other than lawn, and then we have our normal detention basin that um that will be maintained regularly also. With with the proposed lighting. It's just good, we're proposing fixtures at twenty-five foot high and eighteen-foot-high mounted poles in the front. Uh, we've um. These uh fixtures will be decorative, uh LED fixtures. And they were placed around the site to give us a well-balanced uh uniform uh illumination throughout the site. So we're proposing a a nice landscape with a nice lighting. Uh, to accommodate the the building. And when we just, and then Soil, Rose, and Settlement Control Plan will obviously need approvals uh from the Soil Conservation District. Uh, these are typical, uh, though, I I the, this is typical, we'll have probably one entrance and exit during during the construction of the site. And uh, we'll comply with all uh soil conservation uh requirements. That is all I have, um. I can go back to, I know there there was discussion about the traffic. I can quickly say that um, there will be two apple, sorry. Um, I'm on sheet three here of the layout plan, there'll be two in um. Access points to the site, both which are two-way traffic, uh vehicles will be inside. Vehicles will be entering and exiting the site without any kind of backing up. Or any kind of uh reverse maneuver or, you know, any kind of uh trouble getting in and out of the site. Once they get in the site, they'll be able to maneuver whatever they need to do in the rear and exit uh exit, so. Um, and the frequency of these trucks coming in and out, I mean, I I believe this. Uh, he's the 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 hour, the hours of operation for my client is about five-thirty in the morning. Uh, and they probably uh throughout the su- throughout the day, they're in and out, um, so it's not many truck. Vehicles coming in and out, the trips coming in and out of the driveway at at one time. Uh, so we don't see any kind of traffic issue, uh, we're right on Edwards Road and New Road. Uh, really close to the intersection, we're only uh. A signalized intersection and we have two eighty and Route forty-six for uh access, so. Um, we don't see any type of uh increase in, you know, truck. Traffic uh for for this project, so that's, and we're, so we're asking for a waiver on that.
Okay, and Mr. Ficino, just to follow up on the waiver request. Um, also, I I know there was some discussion with the applicant, unfortunately, as we all know, COVID hits um in traffic. At an all-time probably low in most municipalities and area. Um, you were part of the neighboring application that got approved in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, correct?
Correct, yes.
You were um fully familiar with the very in-depth traffic study that was done at that time. Um, and is on file with the town. Do you have any reason to believe that the applicant's proposed use of the site? The carting trucks is really gonna be a significant impact, if any impact at all, on the uh Edwards Road.
Sure, yes, I do not, I don't believe so, there will not be any impact, correct?
Now, uh, Mr. Ficino, I know you also had an opportunity to review the updated planning memo. From PFJ Planning dated January twenty-ninth, dated engineering memo. Um, from PPI dated March fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one, is there anything in particular in either one of these memos? Um, that you feel the applicant not address?
Um, no, I feel, I feel, I think I um. Got everything on record that I needed to provide testimony on, I don't believe I missed. But please, uh, if I did miss anything, oh, uh, actually, the vehicle charging, okay, hold on, maybe we should. Let me just see real quick, um.
There's a couple comments, if you could go specifically to the engineering uh memo that requires some testimony.
Correct, yes, I I'm looking at that right now, um. I provided testimony for the number two, which is the trees. Uh, we will be providing all kind of wall, and I know. Andrew was asking for wall calculations for this, uh, the the one to three-foot wall that's along the detention basin. We will pro- will provide all types of calculations. Um, it's a small wall, so we don't feel that there's gonna be any impact, but we'll we'll provide all the the necessary calculations for that wall to be designed. Uh, with regards to the twenty-foot easement and grading, uh, where we took care of that, um, there is. The the four-inch cleanout uh that we are providing sewer connection to, uh, again. We're not sure where exactly that there is a twenty-four-inch force main. Um, along the right-of-way. Here, I'm sorry, I'm so slow, but, oh. There's a twenty-four-inch right uh force main running along the right-of-way that uh seems like there's a a um conflict with, but. Again, as I said, mentioned before, this is existing, so we're gonna connect to the existing cleanout. Um, I don't see any issue, it was, it was connected previously. Uh, so there's a little stub here that we're gonna connect to, so I don't see any issue with connecting to the sewers, to the sewer system there. Uh, gate operations, well, you know, the, basically, well, the the gates will operate probably on the key fob, will probably be opened in the morning. By the owners and the the drivers. Obviously, all the parking will be in the front of the building for for the, for the, for the employees. And uh, he's also sha- you know, showing that we need licenses and we need permits for. The Morse, actually Morse County, we have permits for Morse County, uh, we're gonna get soil road, soil erosion. Um, conservation approvals. Then we discussed about the billings in the parking lot and what type. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just helping you move along, can you just confirm?
Yeah, the building will not be sprinkled, uh, there will not be sprinkler in there, uh, it's not required by fire code. Uh, but uh, I I guess that's when they do the permitting of the building, I guess, they'll. They'll see, I don't think it's required. But if it's required by code, we will install it. The char- vehicle charging stations, we don't see, this isn't gonna be a public. Um, it's privately owned, I don't know if the pub, the electric part, uh, charging stations. Would be sufficient here as far as providing them, um, so I don't, we're not proposing to add them. On site.
And uh, Mr. Ficino, you can confirm that the applicant will provide whatever uh plantings are necessary for the township. Forester in regards to the uh landscaping plan, correct?
Yes, yes, we haven't gotten a memo from, from the forester, but we'll, we'll. Definitely reach out to them and make sure we have their blessing, correct, yep.
Okay, just briefly under the storm.
Yeah, and everything with the stormwater uh is okay, we'll we'll comply, and we'll 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 get him any kind of calculations he will need. And and details, uh, regard with the uh. Testimony regarding the soil logs, I I've I've uh personally done the soil logs on site, um, they were all consistent. Um, it's all sand. Uh, at the, at that depth, and actually, we've got seepage at two feet, so they're all consistently the same. Uh, so, yes, they are uh, they are as shown in the stormwater plan. And um, I I've al- already mentioned about the flood hazard area, which is number six, so I'm okay with all the other comments. We'll address them.
Okay, so now moving to the planner's memo dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Okay, as far as any deed history goes, as far as the title work that came in, you're not aware of any restriction? Deed restrictions on the site, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, um. You know, you zoomed in on the Google Map aerial of the site. Um, otherwise, how many times do you think you've been to the site um since starting this application, Mr. Ficino?
I've I've been there multiple times, probably at least a dozen times.
And you believe your testimony on how the site exists today is accurate with the um, with what is at the site today?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and um. You talked a little bit about um the applicant, your understanding of the applicant's uh. Hours of operation and number of employees is provided by the applicant and the materials provided, the traffic study. And uh, the site conditions. You clarified the inconsistency with uh the size of the building.
Correct, yep.
And there's some concerns about the size or the height of the light poles in the rear, can you just confirm in testimony? Why the rear of the site, you're requesting twenty-five feet, but in the front, you did reduce it to eighteen feet?
Yes, s- so the reason for that is, um, because of the the, oh, I'm sorry, what is it, one more? Yeah, because of the distance from the rear of the building to to the rear uh line. The the distance is so wide that I need, I need the height, and I, for me to get. Those those heights lower, I would have to increase poles and it wouldn't be able to reach the center of the site, so. By leaving the rear at twenty-five, which are not seen by the the front, you know, anybody on Edwards Road. Um, I was able to take care of the the lighting in the rear. With the front, uh, um, it just to to make it look more appealing, uh, we did do eighteen-foot pole heights here. It just looks nicer as a um, uh, for the area, uh, in front of a building. Um, so that's why we use the different uh sizes from the front to the back.
Okay, and in the rear, you'll put whatever appropriate shields need to be on, so there won't be any conflict with uh the two eighty west.
Yeah, the, yeah, the program shows spillage a little bit on the two eighty, but it doesn't incorporate all the, there is um. A a buffer of, hold on one second, I'll show you. Uh, yeah, so there there are existing trees along that whole edge that are gonna make uh remain. Uh, they're on the two eighty, so that'll be the screening, uh, so the lighting program doesn't show. Uh, that, but it will not spill out into two eighty. And these are mostly evergreens a- 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 along that edge, so it's it's green as uh. All year round.
Okay, and then finally, Mr. Ficino, you also had an opportunity to review. The memo that was received by the water superintendent dated February second, two thousand twenty-one, correct?
Yes.
And are you able to comply with the superintendent's uh memo as far as any additional materials? Specifications that are required in connection with this.
No problem, correct, yep, we'll 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 take care of all his comments, yep.
So, in conclusion, um, the application at that you have, um. Designed and drafted for the applicant, just to be clear, complies with all the bulk requirements, there's no variances being requested in connection with the. Applicants' request for both preliminary and final site plan, correct?
Correct.
Right, and you did indicate, and it is accurate, and we have provide copies to the board that we did receive Morse County. Planning Board's uh letter as well.
Correct.
Right, is there anything else that you want to add, Mr. Ficino, before the board and members of the public ask questions, if any?
I'm I'm ready, I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, if there's any questions of the engineer.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stone Doherty, that was a very comprehensive review, I appreciate it. Um, Mr. Cagiano, are there any things that you would like to uh further review?
Yeah, just a couple items, just a little bit further clarification, and thank you for the testimony.
Thank you, Andrew.
Mr. Ficino and I worked together over twenty years ago, I haven't seen him in many years. As far as the. Sewage authority right-of-way, I see you 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 testified that you had discussions with them. I just asked the board to have it as a condition of approval, that the applicant would uh obtain like a written letter of concurrence. So there's a paper trail of that, um, that that their concurrence of of filling in that, uh, raising the grade. Along their uh their sewage line there, so that that, I just asked that be a a condition of approval. Um, and the applicant, you know, get get some kind of, something in writing to to the same. On the that 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 area there. Um, the other item, did you mention that you're, there is, the flood plain extends onto the property on the north side, or did you say?
It it does not extend, it it actually comes to this north edge of the property, of that, or I'm sorry, of the adjoining property. Uh, it's not, it does not uh e- encroach into our property.
Okay, all right, uh, thank you. Um, otherwise, as you know, it'd be filling a floodplain and that that's that's a permanent trip to the D B.
Absolutely, absolutely, we.
My my review of the floodplain appeared that it was outside of the uh, your property. Um, just to go back to traffic and your traffic testimony, and I may have missed it, uh. Approximately, how many employees per shift will be utilizing the the site, you know, um, coming in, parking, and then taking out a vehicle?
It would be the twenty-five, twenty-five, twen-. Uh, well, the the twenty-five would be the employees, uh, so they'll be coming in at different shifts. Some are early shifts for the truck drivers, and then you have some, uh, office employees that would be coming in to work in the offices. Um, but, um, they will be at different times, but twenty five would be probably the worst, the the biggest or the most time.
Okay, alright, um, yeah, and that 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 that, thank you. And then as far as, uh, Morris County Soil Conservation District, um, as you saw our note, uh, five under stormwater, um, you'll just need to confirm also a stability counts for them and for us. For the off-site stability of the discharge, um, that that's running over land now, it's it's directed to a point discharge, so.
Yes, yes, well, yep.
And then, uh, you you addressed the wall comment, so I'm good. I, that's all the questions I have, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks for that, anything extra?
Yeah, just a, Mr. Chairman, um, I may have missed it, I I I'm sorry if you already addressed this, but there was a question, I think in my memo as well as Andrew on the fence height. Uh, there's a portion of it that was shown at eight feet.
Yes, um, yeah, I'm I'm gonna clarify that, and I apologize, I didn't mention that during testimony. But my, uh, so the dumpster enclosures that are are proposed on the the rear of the building. Uh, are shown in my detail with, oh, sorry, let me just go there. On sheets, sorry. Yeah, I'm I'm good, I'm sorry. On sheet eight, um, it's showing an eight-foot high fence. We we will change that to six. I'm sorry, that was. Uh, my 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 fault, I I had the wrong detail on it, but it'll it will be a six-foot high fence around the dumpster.
Great, great.
Sorry.
And, um, and then just a couple of questions, a little bit on the operation, um. So, thank you for clarifying the, uh, the building size and footprint, um. Any other tenants in the building besides Caravella Environmental?
Uh, presently, uh, he will be occupying the entire building and the whole in the in the site.
Okay, yes, so basically, it's, uh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, and I don't know in the future if he if he's not utilizing the entire property, if he if he would, you know, rent it to a another landscaper or something, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know.
Okay. But at at the moment, and you have twenty five total employees coming in shifts, do you have a sense of how many trucks about will be will be stored here and in coming in and out?
Pre- presently, he's one of, uh, presently, we have about thirteen, just some trucks. So they all go out staggered, so some, there's some trails, they're about five thirty, and some trails leave at six, some leave at six thirty. So. Okay.
Okay, great, great. Um. I think that was it for me. Oh, actually, uh, one more, um. Thank you for adding some trees, um, but I will say that because you are overparked and you're not able to really put any in the back, it it looks like you have a little bit of room, uh, I would, I I would consider right in front of the building, there's a couple of little islands or peninsulas coming out into the parking lot. Might be, you know, one tree on each.
Okay, that's that's fine.
How mitigate the loss of trees.
That's that's doable, absolutely. Absolutely, I could I could put a a another, uh, little little trees here and here. I just don't want to affect the lighting, but, uh, that should be fine.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, we'll we'll add the two trees.
Okay, at this time, would any, uh, members of the board have questions for the engineering witness?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
Uh, regarding the two gates that I see on either side of the, like, in line with the back of the building on the west side of the building. How wide are those gates? Would they be wide enough to allow fire equipment into the back of that area?
Yes, uh, yes, so so the driveway, they're both twenty four foot in width, so the 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 gate will open at twenty five, twenty four foot wide.
I believe that the fire department requires that, so that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and and they'll have a Knox box, we we will comply with the the fire department's review letter.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Fattino will, uh, in addition to Knox box, a there, the fire department also mentioned the, uh, location of the dumpsters. Are you able to comply with that also? Moving farther from the building?
I I I did on this, uh, latest revision, moved them a little further out, uh, before I had them adjacent to the building. Um, I have not gotten another review letter, but if, um, if they further, if they want me to further move them, they would have to be in the lawn area. But, uh, w- once, you know, I I so I did move them further. Uh, I'm not sure, he didn't give me the exact area to put them in, so I will follow up with him if he's okay with this area. And if worst case, first case, we would have to just move them to the other side onto the lawn area.
Alright, in addition to that, they also mentioned, uh, description of the materials to be stored. You mentioned mostly equipment. Will there be any kind of uh, debris or or any kind of materials stored back?
Uh, no, no, all all the equipment would, all the 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 trucks will have, will be empty. There won't be any debris. Um, it's stored on site.
What what about other loose materials, uh, that might be used for landscaping?
Uh, we don't.
Dirt mulch.
Think there'll be stockpiles, you're saying stockpiles of mulch or stone or gravel or something? Um, I don't see, um, the the th- this specific user will not have that need to to store, um, those the that material, raw material here, and obviously won't be for resale either, it'll just be for his use only, but, um. Well, there's only one thing I do like to say, one thing if I can. We 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 do emergency, uh, uh, for municipalities, you know, that the municipality gets a fire, we work.
Wait, if somebody, oh, oh, if if somebody is gonna provide testimony, we gotta swear them in and get their name.
That's fine.
Alright, so why don't we do this? Uh, what, raise your writing.
A little closer.
Uh, just switch spots so we can hear you better. We're tired, we're tired of hearing from Vincent.
Thank you.
Alright, um, you swear firm, tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Uh, John Caravella, uh, J O H N C A R A V E L L A.
Okay, and I'm gonna take a wild guess here that you're somehow related to Caravella demolition.
That's me.
Okay, uh, counsel, you wanna, uh, have, uh, the gentleman, uh, respond to the to the, uh, question?
Well, I believe he was gonna provide additional information as to, uh, Mr. Caravella. You were indicating that sometimes as part of your services, you contract with municipalities. And as a result of that, as far as the concern from the board member as to any potential materials that might be on the site besides just your trucks and containers, um, can you just let the board know what that would be?
Correct. Well, what we do is we we do emergencies and we may get called out at eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning for a a structure fire, uh, uh, we we then would, uh, dispatch our trucks and go to the emergency and knock the structure down, and we would have to load our tractor trailers and get the material offsite, and therefore they would have to be dumped the next day. So therefore, there may be trailers that would be loaded in the yard just for the for for a few hours until the next morning, till they get dumped out, and they will be tarp. So they wouldn't be untarped, they'd be tarped, um, in the truck, and nothing would be on on the ground, it would be, everything would be contained in 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 the tractor trailers.
And those types of materials are typically what we call.
Demolition debris, demolition debris, wood, uh, insulation, uh, brick, that that's that's it.
Right, and that's only in those emergency cases, which is unfortunately no good news for anybody when you're responding to a fire at that time.
Correct, I mean, that's that's just what we do, that's just our job, so we just have to help people that, you know, there's an emergency. We have to go, just like a fire department, you know, they get called, we have to go.
Alright, and for clarification, your your testimony is that's that's just temporary, short-term storage of those materials, it's not gonna be there long-term?
Correct, it'd just be in the truck for the duration of the the night. Like I said, if we got a call at one o'clock in the morning and the truck's loaded by two, two o'clock in the morning, the next morning the trucks will leave and go right to the transfer station across the street and dump it.
Okay. Uh, any other board members with questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
Yeah, number one, uh, I passed by the property and, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing this because the current property is definitively an eyesore. Uh, but my real question is, uh, I understand what you're doing in the parking area with gravel because of the uh, potential to destroy the asphalt, but, uh, Edwards Road and New Road are both asphalt. What will your vehicles be doing to those roads and how are we going to prevent them from deteriorating further than they are today?
So so so, um, my basis with that is, um, the excavators that that, uh, he has the construction equipment. When they're unloading on and off the trailers, uh, they have the tracks. Um, so it's not like a rubber tire machinery or the, um, um, the effect isn't from the actual truck uh, or or vehicle, it's from the construction equipment. So the tracks will just peel up that asphalt and he'll be just repairing asphalt all the time. Uh, so the gravel will kind of take that impact, and there will be less maintenance, um, on the parking lot. So it's not, it's not on Edwards Road, it would not affect the 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 frontage, which is all gonna be between this asphalt. So it's just that, uh, that loading and unloading of those construction vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Fajari.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Fattino, question, um, are are the, uh, the runoff regulations the same when we're dealing with the the dripage, the oil, the petrol, the gas dripage of heavy equipment? Compared to a regular parking lot of cars? And if so, um, are, is your plan designed for that, or is it just designed for a regular parking lot?
So 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 basically, uh, you know, any spill is is gotta be cleaned up right away, once it's once it's noticed. Um, they will be putting it in the garage and doing any quick maintenance they would have to do. But whether whether it drips on asphalt or drips in the parking lot on gravel, um, it'll soak in just the same. Um, so, um, it might be even easier to just, you know, scoop out a couple shovels of, uh, gravel and and restore the gravel area, uh, which was, uh, contaminated, so it would be easier to maintain any kind of spillage. Um, where the pavement, if it's broken up and, you know, it's just, it's still gonna spill. Uh, so basically, they would have to quickly take care of that spill. So, um, whe- whe- whether it's the vehi-, you know, and I don't know if you were saying, does it, is it, does it make an impact that their vehicles, if they're, if they're trucks?
Is that? Well, yeah, I I what I was getting at is is y- your retention system and the diversion of of the water and all those things. Is it commensurate with the type of equipment that's gonna be there, or is it, that's my question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so so, yeah, the, so there's an inlet in in the middle of the parking lot where all this construction's gonna be. All the construction vehicles are gonna be set. Um, i- i- it it goes into a water quality basin, so any kind of, uh, you know, any anything will be trapped, uh, will be, any kind of contamination will be trapped before it gets out into, uh, the detention basin, uh, into the underground basin, so yes, uh, they'll take care of that.
Okay, and I assume the the planner has, uh, uh, addressed this issue and is okay with it? Is that correct, Susan?
Yeah, I think it's more of a management question, so I would defer to Andrew on that.
Yeah, it's, um, he's usually use a lot utilizing a infiltration basin with the sand layer, and it is actually the 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 a preferred B M P for capturing pollutant loading that we're talking about, so yes, the the system is water quality basin is appropriate for this kind of use.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a question. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, um, just to follow up with Andrew and and Bruce, so who operates and maintains that water quality? Um, retention system?
Yeah, so I I can answer that, so.
I can answer that, no.
The, the basin, they have to submit a ma- maintenance plan, and it was Miss Fattino, I said, anytime, any kind of spill, there's a whole, uh, protocol for that, but for regular ru- maintenance and uh, of the basin and the water quality device, there is monthly and quarterly, uh, inspection and, uh, maintenance that needs to be done. That is, uh, part of this approval. That is the annual.
Does the township have to do anything, or is it just totally the owner? And then D or D P?
Ultimately, the township is responsible for all projects in the town, and the owner is responsible. And the owner, the the township has the right for oversight if they want to, uh, for for enforcement, um, and, uh, compliance, but it is the owner's responsibility to maintain it, but the township can can do compliance and enforcement on it.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Dinsmore.
Um, you did address this question before, but I want to make sure, to my satisfaction. You talked about the lighting and with route two eighty back there. I want to make that that the light fixtures, whatever the fixtures are, that the hotspot of the light will not be visible from two eighty, that it will be completely shielded.
Yeah, yes, well, and and these are LED lights, so we we can, we can add those shields so there is no, no, uh, spillage on two eighty. Yes.
I I hate those LED lights, cuz they, even from a distance, when the you get the blue light things, they distract, and I don't want to have a hotspot, and that's literally being able to see the bulb uh, visible from two eighty.
Yeah, yeah, well, so, well, yeah, these will face forward, um, and we'll have some shields behind them, no problem, we'll we'll add those shields.
As long as they can't see the light directly, I'm fine. It has to be completely indirect, if they do see.
Very good.
Yep, we'll we'll comply. Thank you.
Chairman? Have a question. Mr. Napolitano. Thank you, Mr. Fattino, for your presentation. Uh, can you bring up, uh, on mine, I have sheet five, can you bring that one up? Yeah, and and scroll down towards the, uh, okay, so I'm I'm looking at the Edwards Road, you have about five trees planted there in the front.
Yes.
Will that, those trees obstruct the view of the trucks coming in and out of cars coming along Edwards Road?
Um, uh, none, none, there's, uh, uh, the, they're they're cut up high, um, they're probably eight, probably eight foot high, um, cut up, like, they're just a, uh, the canopy, so there shouldn't be any obstruction, uh, for with for their view.
Okay, and then, thank you, and then to the, alright, so, uh, I guess that'll be to the west, there is a residence there? I believe, okay. Can you guys i- install any trees on that lawn area to block the lighting or sound for the residents living next door to that? Is that possible? On that.
Uh, uh, this, where the, okay, hold on, let me just go, uh, so it's it's, there's a detention basin here.
Okay.
Okay, so you're saying there there is a hole just to the, I guess that's the north? I'm sorry, yeah, that's the north front corner of the site. Uh, and and you wanna want us to add, excuse, so there'll be a fence on top of this wall here along this entire length.
Oh, so there is gonna be a wall there, is what you're saying?
So there's a, there's a three to four, there's a one, uh, it's probably three or four foot wall there with the fence above it. So though it'll be, still be screened completely, they won't be able to see, see, uh, into the site.
Okay.
Yeah, so so the, so there is screening provided for that resi- resident.
Okay, I'm just worried about the noise level, uh, and lighting at nighttime, uh, the residents living next door to that. Uh, if there's any way to deflect some of that, then, you know, that'd be fantastic.
Uh, so let me go to the lighting plan, there there's very little of any spillage, uh, towards them them. Uh, as far as, you know, that is also commercial property, uh, there is, you know, they have, there's, they're allowed a residential unit there, so they know, um, they're allowed a residential unit there. So they know, um, they've kind of been dealing with this the whole life. So it's always been.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have two quick questions myself. Uh, the, the water utility, uh, letter also asked about, um, the water, the drinking water demands for the site. Have you been able to reach out to them on, on what those requirements will be?
Um, I, 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 I will reach out to them. Um, I don't, I don't see a high demand of water. Uh, the, the water demand won't be anything unreasonable that they won't be able to handle, but I will reach out to them and take care of all their, their comments.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, the other question I have has to do with the traffic through the site. Um, so you have two-way traffic going into gates on both sides of the property.
Yes.
Could you explain a little bit why, why maybe that wouldn't be one-way traffic going in each way? Or, or why the flow of traffic is designed the way it is?
Um, well, having the two-way traffic on this side is for additional parking. Um, if, if anything, the one-way could be, uh, included on this side. But because of the, the, the size of the vehicles that might be coming in and out, um, fire, the fire, a truck will, will, will run a wider, a wider driveway. So making it like a 12-foot driveway wouldn't really, you know, uh, help the site. I think it, it worsens the, the, the flood, the circulation. So that's why we, we want them both 24-foot wide. And you need the 24-foot wide here for the parking. So that, yeah, so that.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, and I was suggesting to make it narrower, but, um, I, I would have expected a, a one-way in and an out just to handle that, but, um.
Um, yeah, it, it, it works better this way. You have the options.
Gives you flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, if, yeah.
All right. Sorry, I don't mean to testify for you. Okay.
It was our, it was our choice.
All right. Any other board members have questions? Okay, uh, Ms. Stone Doherty, uh, we're done with our questions for the engineering witness. Did you have, uh, another witness you were going to present? Ms. Doherty?
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Caravella also, as you, as you heard and saw, kind of jumped in there and did provide some testimony during the engineering component of it. And I think really addressed the limited, uh, questions I was gonna ask of him in separate testimony. Um, so if there's no members of public with any questions, I would just ask the right to give a brief summary. Um, and then the, the board to please vote favorably on the application.
I appreciate that. We'll, of course, give you that opportunity, but as you mentioned, uh, first, we'd like to open it up to members of the general public. Um, so if any members of the public have any questions, uh, or any members of this application, uh, please go ahead and raise your hand and we'll open up the public portion at this time. We'll also be accepting comments from the general public.
I see no hands raised.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll do a good old countdown going once, going twice. All right, seeing no hands raised, uh, we'll go ahead and close the public portion for this application. Ms. Doherty, I'll turn it back to you.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And members of the board, thank you so much for your evening here tonight. Um, as you heard through Mr. Faccino, the applicant, um, has proposed a fully compliant application in accordance with your zoning ordinances. Uh, we feel very strongly that the proposal, um, introduced here and described this evening will make a huge improvement to the aesthetics along Edwards Road as well as the functionality of the site. Um, so we're asking the board to please vote favorably in connection with this application. Thank you so much.
All right. Do any members of the playing board have any comments they'd like to share before I accept the motion? All right. I- in that case, I do have two conditions that were identified during our, uh, during the presentation that be the letter of concurrence for the sewage right-of-way, as well as the lighting being shielded from, uh, 280. And with that stated, um, I'll accept the motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, also the additional trees being planted on the driveway area.
Okay, so noted, provided they don't interfere with the lighting.
Correct.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Mandel, what's your motion?
To accept, to approve.
Motion to approve the application, uh, with the conditions identified?
That's correct. And what's the number? Uh, well, GJ Real Properties.
That's correct. It's, it's 20 colon 526. Do we have a second?
Second, Napolitano.
Okay. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jedich.
Yes.
Councilman D. Piero. Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fajari.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez. Yes. Councilman D. Piero.
He's on you.
Mr. Mandel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano.
Yes.
Uh, Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes. All right, that's, uh, that's an approval of the, uh, application. Congratulations. Have a wonderful day.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Calling up next is application number 20 colon 527 Edwards Holdings LLC at 986 Edwards Road, Block 766, Lot 16. This is an amended preliminary and final site plan. Um, is the applicant present for this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Rosemary Stone Doherty on behalf of the applicant Edwards Holding LLC, uh, here this evening on amended, uh, preliminary and final site plan in regards to the size of their outdoor storage. And I should have with me here this evening, Mr. Frederick C. Miola, who is the applicant's engineer and is also a qualified planner, as well as a representative of the applicant, Mr. Joseph Peluso.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Vate, were there any waivers to cover for this application?
Yes, um, just some testimony to be requested. It didn't look like they actually needed any variances. Um, I think at one point it ended, they did, but there weren't any actual requested. So that's just a clarification, uh, for testimony. There were a few corrections uh, and some of the technical requirements that we think can be done, uh, on the final plans. Um, in terms of waivers, though, um, they did ask for a waiver from a traffic study. Then they were citing the fact that there was a traffic study done as part of the 2014 approval. Uh, and, and the current application would propose no, no major changes to the circulation and traffic pattern. So we recommended that waiver. Um, the environmental assessment study was waived in the 2014 approval. So we, we believe it can be waived for this, which is just in, you know, in addition to that, that approval. Uh, and then they did ask for combined preliminary and final site plan, uh, and requested waivers from those, uh, additions for preliminary approval. We concurred with those waivers.
Okay. Any questions from the board about the waivers? Accept the motion, uh, to approve the waivers?
So move to approve the waivers from the, uh, BFJ Planning Memo dated October 29th, 2020.
All right, that's Mr. Dinsmore. Do we have a second to Mr. Dinsmore?
Second, to Hernandez.
All right, Ms. Hernandez, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any, uh, dissenting? All right, hearing none. Um, the waivers are accepted. Uh, please continue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, if I could have Mr. Frederick C. Miola sworn in, please?
Fred, you need to unmute yourself.
Could we do Mr. Peluso also, just in case?
Absolutely, yes, please.
Joe, unmute yourself.
Who's your ready on?
You're gonna, you're gonna do both of us at the same time?
Mr. Peluso? Hey, raise your right hand. Do you swear or tell the truth before this planning board tonight in this virtual format?
I do. Yes, I do.
Okay, so Mr. Miola first, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure, Frederick C. Miola, M.E.O.L.A.
Okay, and then Mr. Peluso?
Giuseppe Peluso, G.I.U.S.E.P.P.E.P.E.L.U.S.O.
Okay, uh, counsel, uh, your witness is subject to the chairman.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Miola, um, could you just real quickly just give a brief summary of your qualifications as an engineer and as a planner? And confirm that you are still licensed as of this evening in both capacities?
Sure. I'm a licensed professional engineer, surveyor and planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since 1972. I presently own FC Miola Engineering and Surveying, doing subdivisions of site plans throughout the Morris County area. I've been to the precipice board, planning board and board of adjustment numerous times. Uh, I was an adjunct professor at County College of Morris for 12 years, teaching the land use and boundary analysis course at that facility. Um, I don't know how much more you want me to go into. Most of the members I recognize.
Very good, Mr. Miola. Do any, any questions of the, uh, does, excuse me, does the board have any questions, uh, regarding this witness's qualifications? All right, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Miola, you're accepted as a witness for engineering and planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Miola, you were the applicant's engineer, um, in connection with your application that was originally approved for the property at 986 Edwards Road, correct?
Actually, I was the surveyor. Mr. Faccino was the actual site engineer and got the approvals for it.
But you also did.
Yep.
Sorry, Fred, but to refresh your memory, you also offered a little planning testimony as necessary. So you played surveyor and planner, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, but you are also a licensed engineer and in connection with this application for amended and final site plan, you drew the plans that the board has, um, in their packets, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So can you just describe to the board real quickly, what is the biggest, if not the only change that's being proposed to the, uh, already approved, uh, site plan?
Yeah, what the applicant is requesting, and if you want, we can, I can share a screen.
You should have that ability. Are you all set?
No, I, I think I, I messed myself up and I, I lost you guys. So I, I don't think I'm gonna share the screen. I have the, the site plan, but I can do it without it.
Are you sure? Do you want me to save it to a thumb drive and get permission to share my screen?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have it on mine. I just went to get it and I lost the board.
Hey, while you're talking, uh,
Okay. I'm back again.
Can you allow me the ability? And while he's talking, I will upload and share my screen.
Yes, Rosemary, I will.
Thank you so much. Hey, Fred. Can you just, uh, please describe to the board the, um, the change to the outdoor support?
Yep, when, when this plan, is, is there an echo?
I don't mind.
Okay, it's only me. When, when this plan was approved originally, the area in the rear, and if you look at the left-hand side of the drawing saying, is this conditions? The area that's speckled, that's the area that was designated for outdoor storage. What the applicant wants to do has decided that they need to enlarge that outdoor storage area. And if you look at proposed conditions, there's a, the largest portion of it is on the north side of the property. Uh, and then they added 10-foot along the balance of it coming across. Um, it doesn't affect any of the traffic movement on site. There's still plenty of room between the parked, parking cars on the rear by the garage doors and the storage area to the rear. So that's really what the request is, is just to modify the prior approval to allow additional outdoor storage. Do you want me to just keep going, Rosemary, or?
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up while you're talking.
Okay, yeah. The, the site is fronted on Edwards Road and the rear of the site is fronted on the entrance ramp for Route 280. So where this, the expansion is, isn't affecting anyone. And, and there's ample room. You know, the site was approved previously and it's been working fine as far as traffic movement getting in and out on the rights. The driveway is on the right side of the building, which is 24 feet wide. I, I don't know if you want me to give you any more information on it. I mean, we just heard what the surrounding site is by Mr. Faccino.
We do not have a screen share.
To his site.
We do not have a screen share at the moment.
I'm just trying to pull it up while, uh, WebEx is a little different to share than obviously Zoom. And I'm just trying to pull it up off the thumb drive so that I can bring that up for you.
You may be sharing the wrong screen.
Yeah, yeah. Hang on, let me, let me try it, Rosemary. See, so I, I have it on the screen already. I just gotta get it to come up.
All right, we can only have one presenter at a time now, so we need to pick.
Okay, I, since he said he had it up.
Next week.
Okay, so we'll, we'll assign Mr. Miola as the presenter again.
I know what's happening. I'm missing the tab.
Done.
Mr. Miola, you should be ready to present.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to minimize the picture so I can click on the drawing.
Take your time.
Take your time.
The share button isn't working.
Stand by one. I'm gonna make myself a presenter and give it back to you.
Okay.
Try it out.
Mr. Miola, any luck?
No.
It should give you the option to share however many screens you have up.
All right, quick question out to the Board members. Do all of you have the materials that were provided in your packet? Does anybody need the presentation on the screen?
No, I have the drawing they're referring to.
I have it.
All right, I just need to know from anybody who might not have it.
Fred, do you see where it just says "Share", and then you can just click up on the top left where it says, when you click "Share", it allows you, you just hit the first option that says "My Screen"? You see that, Fred?
Yep, I clicked on that. My problem is, I can't get back to the top of my laptop, which is where I have it saved.
Okay, so you can't minimize this screen and then just pull up the other one?
That's what I'm trying to do. Hold on.
It can be difficult. Just, if you give him a minute, maybe he can do it.
Okay. Now, I got that. Now, I gotta bring you guys back up. I got it on my computer. Now, I'm trying to figure out how to get it out so everybody can see it. I apologize.
It's like you might be doing it, Fred. There you go.
I think I just got it. Sooner or later, I'm gonna get the hang of this. Okay.
You got it.
Okay. On the left side, you see the existing conditions. You see the area designated speckled that was on the original approval. Off to the right of that, you see an area in front of it in gray, which is the additional outdoor storage that we're requesting.
Fred, if you could just blow it up a little bit on what we're requesting, so maybe the Board could see it a little better?
Sure. Okay, so it's basically this 10-foot strip, and then this end area, which is... Hang on, I wrote it down on my sheet. Which is about 65 feet wide by about 95 feet from the beginning to the back. And this larger area is the one that Mr. Peluso wants for himself.
Okay, so, Mr. Miola, just to clarify a little bit more on that. You say, "Mr. Peluso", Mr. Peluso, who's the primary tenant, the largest tenant in the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and his location in the building, are these garages that are at the... When you go in through the one-way in and out into the rear where it's all fenced in the outdoor storage, he's in that area that you have now, like a darker shade of gray lines, correct?
Yeah, yeah, he's... Door areas 6, 7, and 8, I believe.
Correct, and all of that areas where Mr. Peluso, for his company Peluso Contracting, stores their equipment, correct?
Yes, they store their equipment. Sometimes, they'll store supplies that have to be brought to a job. You know, they need to... It comes in early, so they need to move it over.
But for the most part, it's just his trailers and his construction equipment and trucks, correct?
Yes, that's predominantly what you're gonna see there.
And the reason for the proposed application was just since Mr. Peluso is the primary tenant and has been the primary tenant since it was approved. It allows him some flexibility here since this is his entire domain area as far as he would adjust his equipment on his portion of the site, correct?
Correct.
Right, and then, this other little strip of land here, not land, but of outdoor storage that you said is about a 10-foot-wide strip there, that is for the other tenants in the property, correct?
Correct.
And that was adjusted off of, my understanding, about one-vehicle length. Is that correct, Mr. Miola?
Yeah. It provides for two vehicles stacked.
Okay, so what is the distance, Mr. Miola, from the edge of the parking spaces that each tenant has in front of their dedicated space to the new proposed outdoor storage line? What is that distance?
It's approximately 53 feet.
So, in your opinion, is there plenty of maneuverability there for any turnaround vehicles or any trucks that would come in and out of this outdoor storage area?
Yeah, there's ample space there.
Now, Mr. Miola, you've been to the site, would you say, at least a dozen or more times?
Probably more than a dozen, since the project started.
And right now, in the last, what, two years you've been to the site, it's pretty much fully occupied, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah.
And with what you...
There were some vehicles in those spaces along the rear. You know, and the parking lot in the front was in full, but it's never been completely full.
So, this client got their approvals back in 2014. And when they contacted you to come in for the amended site plan, the issue was that they misjudged kind of that outdoor storage line when they went in front of the Board initially. Is that correct?
Yeah, or more like, you know, like all companies, you wanna do well, you grow. And you need more space.
Okay. And so, when you worked up the zoning, there are no variances that are required for this additional outdoor storage, correct?
No.
It's still fully enclosed, shielded behind the building? There's no physical changes to the site whatsoever, correct?
Absolutely not.
So, the only change the applicant is making is to the delineation of what is considered outdoor storage?
Yes, because the original approval had a specific area delineated for storage.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miola. You had an opportunity to review the engineer's review memo dated November 12th of 2020. That's the only review member I have from the engineer, so I'm not sure if there was an updated one. Correct, Mr. Miola?
Uh, yes. I remember it. I couldn't find it in the file. But I don't, as I remember it, I don't think there was anything that's... We can't deal with.
Okay, well, the major comment that the engineer had is he just wanted to be certain that the outdoor storage is screened. So, can you just describe...
Yeah, it's enclosed in a six-foot fence around the south side, the west side, and the north side. Okay. There's no gate closing off the front, so there's still that 24-foot driveway coming in. Okay, and just before I forget, I wanna mention something to the Board. I caught it tonight when I was looking at it. Item number 11 on the general notes says, "Vertical elevation datum assumed". That's incorrect. It was GPS'd in. It's an NAVD-88, and I will correct that.
Okay. So, Fred, besides correcting that note on the plan, the engineer's memo also just requested that an updated survey be provided. So, you'll update the ASBIL, turn that in as a condition of approval, and you can add the plan and key map with the north arrow to your plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, on the planner's memo dated October 29th, 2020, the two major comments of the planner was, one, to confirm that even with this additional outdoor storage being delineated on the plan, that the applicant would still have enough parking spaces on-site. Is that accurate?
That is correct. There's no change in the number of employees. It's just, as we described, it's just storage area for Mr. Peluso and enlarged to all the neighbors, all the other adjoining spaces.
Okay, so just to be clear, Mr. Miola, the parking spaces that are now part of the outdoor storage are still there, they're still striped, they're still in front of the garages for Mr. Peluso to use, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And as far as the outdoor storage, has there been any change to any of the materials that are being stored on the site that would be inconsistent, Mr. Miola, with what they were approved to be able to store in their 2014 approval?
No, there's not. It's that the items stored there would be consistent with their site plan approval.
In fact, it's Mr. Peluso is still the same tenant. It's just a matter of changing the line in the delineation in the rear, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, that's all I have for Mr. Miola.
Okay, Mr. Cargiano, did you have any questions?
No, no questions, but it appears that our last comment was on the 2014 approval where they had allowed the use of, like, concrete blocks as store material. Are you envisioning utilizing material stores that needs the concrete blocks or just the same materials? When I look on the aerials, I don't see any storage of materials like that.
Yeah, I think...
What kind of materials will be stored?
Once in a while, it may be there because Mr. Peluso is a builder, you know, and sometimes they need a pallet of blocks and they deliver it there and then bring it to a job. But it's not something that's gonna be routine.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Vlade, anything from you today?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm from the record, there are those few technical items that were in the checklist, portion of the memo, the signature space, the scale of the map, the north arrow. I think Mr. Cargiano mentioned that as well. And then, just adding to the zoning table, the information about the parking requirements. Those can all be done as part of the final compliance plans. And then, the last thing is, just perhaps as a condition of the approval, that the applicant should remove any items that are currently being stored outside in the front of the building. And that's all.
Absolutely. You know, I mean, the times I was there, I didn't see anything in front of the building. But if there's anything there, you're absolutely right. It should be removed.
Okay. Any Board members with questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
What's the material of the proposed outdoor storage? Is that paved or...?
It's all paved. Yeah.
Is that currently...?
Everything was paved in the 2014 approval.
Okay, so it's currently paved?
Yeah, it's currently paved. Nothing's changing.
Yeah, well, that's what was confusing me because I figured it was paved and you were showing that the coverage didn't change, and I was wondering how. Now, I know how. Thank you.
I have a question also. Is it anybody's opinion that the... Sorry, anybody, I mean, Mr. Miola or our own engineer or planner, that this might impact fire truck access to the rear side of the building?
I would not believe so. You know, if they have to get to the back, they would come in through the drive... I'm sorry, I'm using my finger. They would come in from the driveway on the right, and then they could come along.
But then, that's where my question is, that is that area going to prohibit them from reaching parts of the building or...?
I don't think so. You're talking... The last portion of it is... Hang on, I'm just gonna scale it.
30 feet or so?
It's approximately 45. So, there's ample room for a fire truck to get in there and fight it.
No, I mean, but if that storage space is filled with vehicles or anything else that's being stored, the truck won't be able to get passed into that storage area. So, will the building be protected?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if you wouldn't mind, if we could... Mr. Peluso is already sworn in. He's actually a firefighter for the township of East Hanover, so he would be actually, in one of these rare situations, he would have the credentials to be able to exactly on-point answer the question. If you don't mind me interrupting, Mr. Miola.
I don't mind at all, and I'd consider that to be an appropriate use of Mr. Peluso.
So, Mr. Peluso, you know you're a firefighter for the township of East Hanover. Could you answer the chairman's concern about a fire truck and accessibility if they wanted to go into the rear and fight the building?
Yes. So, just so you know, I am a volunteer fireman in East Hanover for 25 years now. I'm an officer-president. And as far as vehicles getting in the back, there's plenty of room for turnaround. A ladder truck can definitely get in there and be above the entire building, even with what we're proposing. Length of fire hose are 50 feet. Normally, the building's 75 feet. So, you could even pull right to the front corner of the building. And with one length of hose, you could almost be in the back of the building. So, there definitely would be no issues.
All right, so I will take it then. If you had to fight the fire here, you'd see no issues?
Correct.
Okay. That satisfies my question. Any other Board members with questions? All right, if not, I'll open it up to the general public. I'm sorry, assuming, Ms. Stone Doherty, that that concludes your testimony?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I just would like Mr. Peluso, in his own words, just to explain a little bit there. Joe, just explain a little bit so the Board understands that even though this whole area is shaded gray... where you are the primary tenant and have been the primary tenant since the building was first built. Just gives the board a little bit of a flavor, that's not to indicate that you're gonna have this just stacked with vehicles, you still want to be able to access your garages and get in and out, you just needed some flexibility was my understanding with how you would store some things on your side of the yard.
Correct, so I'm co-owner of the building, I'm tenant occupied. So my understanding when we went for this first site plan approval, that everything behind the building was outdoor storage. Our mistake is we were very neat and accurate with everything we did, and we drew a nice line with parking slips for tenants, and that's what brought all this about, because the zoning said, well, no, this is the outdoor storage. You know, because we drew a line, we drew that, so we can line it and have everything nice and neat. So when I had a 20-foot box there temporarily, the zoning official saw that and he told me I had to get it moved, and that's what brought this all on, so yeah, there wouldn't be boxes and materials and everything right next to the building anyway, because there's a garage, and we put a trailer in the garage, we pull out every single day, so as far as access to the building, they would still have access, there's painted lines that the fire department asked us to do after the fact that this was approved, and we did. I mean, since day one, we have followed and done anything possible to keep everything satisfactory with the township. So I just, I brought this up to Rosemary that, you know, okay, now my understanding, it's not the entire back. I just, I need more space just in case I, you know, get a pallet of siding delivered, or I have a box there, you know, just anything I need temporarily. I don't want to be getting fines and, you know, whatever issues arise.
Okay, thank you, Joe, thank you for the clarification, so the board has a better flavor of what's happening on the site and why they request additional storage.
Oh, you know, I have one more thing, because I know, I'm sorry, for the lady's name, she said something about front front storage in the front parking lot, and we don't have anything there, so I'm not sure where that arose from, but we're very sure to make sure nobody puts anything up there, so I'm not sure what that was about.
I think I must have caught it on a street view, and maybe it was a bad day when they took the photo, so.
All right, no problem, we're just, like I said, we're trying to buy from, buy everything, so.
All right, then, very quickly, any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Paluso? Okay. Ms. Stone Doherty, we are done with our questions for Mr. Paluso.
We're done, Mr. Chairman, as you can see, we're not proposing any variances, and the applicant wanted to come back before the board just to clarify and not have any future potential issues with anything being stored outside of the delineated line for outdoor storage, because there is actually a line painted in the back of the building that shows the outdoor storage location.
Understood, all right, well, at this time, we will open it up to any members of the general public who have questions or comments for the applicant. Please go ahead and raise your hands if you have any questions or comments for the applicant.
I see no hands raised.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the public portion. Ms. Doherty, any, any final comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, we really appreciate your time and the board members' time, we know it's getting late. And again, the application is just for clarification to avoid any future misunderstandings or any issues where the storage is located on the site.
All right, any comments from the board members before I accept the motion? Okay, in that case, I'll accept the motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
There's the question of what the condition was before I make a motion, what was that condition regarding? I think Mr. Miola mentioned it.
I will check my notes, the only condition I saw was that the storage materials should be removed from the front of the building, but I think we've addressed that.
Okay.
Mr. Mealy, I think Mr. Miola mentioned the provision to note, was it note 11 on the plans?
The GPS, Fred.
Have to correct the datum.
Yeah, yeah, it's a correction.
Okay.
But not necessarily a condition, I don't think.
I'm sorry, Susan, go ahead.
Yeah, Dominic, I don't think that's necessarily a condition, it's just a correction that Mr. Miola noted.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve, application number 20:527, Edwards Holding LLC, 986 Edwards Road, Block 766, Lot 16, amended preliminary and final major site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy, do we have a second?
My second, that.
All right, second, Mr. Napolitano. Nora, would you please call the, oh, I'm sorry. That was you, Bruce?
That was me, that is.
That was not Bruce.
That was Mr. Didich, I believe.
That was me.
Yeah, sorry, still getting used to your, to your voice.
No worries, yeah.
Okay, so we have our second, Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Didich.
Yes.
Councilman Andy Piera.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez. Yes. Mr. Mandel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken.
Yes. All right, motion passes, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank, thank you, I just want to say thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for putting up with me trying to figure out how to get it on the share screen, I'm getting better.
Sure thing, Mr. Miola, have a great evening. All right, and with that said, I'd just like to thank all of our board members tonight, as well as our professionals, especially Ms. Jolie and Mr. Hoffker for his IT assistance tonight and every night, so thank you all. With that, I'll accept the motion to conclude the meeting.
Motion to.
Chairman.
Meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed? The ayes have it, have a great night, everyone.
You too.
Everyone stay safe.
Good night. Thank you.